Building. A ton of high rises.
Right up on the wall.
Kind of right on the harbor. And people that used to have views. Are not going to have use any longer.
Oh.
Oh.
Is this downtown?
Yes, this is right on, right on the front. Right along the waterfront.
By the big high-rise hotels.
Right along the harbor, we're like the Harbor Cruise and the Midway.
Yep.
There used to be parking lots across Harbor Drive.
Yep.
Those parking lots are no.
So this is before you make the turn going north, south again.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is that section there.
And then we're.
Come along.
All, it's all going to be, I mean, they're working.
Yeah.
And where Seaport Village is.
Uh huh.
In a couple of years. Gone, all going to be high rises. And a lot of people are upset because, you know, they were back and they had the views.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, it is.
That's. That's where building heights are. Right.
Oh, good segue, good segue, yeah.
Um, so are you guys ready? Um, I see we've got, I see we've got Stephen on uh Zoom and Tim on Zoom.
Is Tim on Zoom?
Yeah.
And Amy's also.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. So um, I guess we're ready to go.
David, go ahead and call it to order. Uh, can I get a phone call, please?
Yes, um. Okay, Richard Seiler.
Present.
Joe Mann. Dale Robbins.
Present.
DG Garcia.
Present.
Tim Olson. Steve. Steven Ramirez.
Good.
Paul Brown.
Present.
Jim Bomker.
Present.
That's it. Thank you.
Um, did, did she call Joe?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so we have Joe Mann is absent and that's it, I believe. And can I get a? Motion to excuse Joe Mann?
Remoted.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so let's record show Joe Mann's excused. So today is our public hearing day uh for the. Like this five areas. On our development code and comprehensive plan, building height definition. Manufactured home, this is the one that regards to the garage carport, limited use requirements. Comprehensive Plan MAP amendments mainly for annexations and a little bit what we did at Meadowwood Campus. Same with the zoning ma- amendment, and then we'll also look at the parking uh. Amendments, parking standards amendments, uh that includes electric vehicles and the bicycle parking. That uh we have, so that's going to be our public hearing. Then we'll go ahead and go through their reports and citizens' comments. So let's go, our first thing is reviewing of the minutes from October twelfth. Do I have any comments on the minutes from October twelfth? Can I get a motion to approve as written?
Motion to approve is written.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's uh is written. So building hea- height definition.
Yeah, maybe go through the. So no, so I actually have a staff presentation.
Okay.
So um, in terms of the, the, the twenty twenty-two annual comp plan and development code amendments, um as uh. Uh Chairman Seiler already indicated, we have a total of five uh amendments that are being proposed. Um, we will be hearing them together. Um, and uh so first we'll go through the staff reports, then we'll open it up for public comments, and then we'll go to your deliberations. And um so as while we do the hearing all together. We um. Uh, the deliberations each has to be separate because each has a separate decision associated therewith. Hi, so. Going to talk about the procedural summary for all of these, um so planning commission originally uh reviewed the uh. The comp plan and development code amendment docket in March and approved it in April. And we have done workshops on these various cases in March, May, June, August, and October. Um, the CIPA noticing public hearings published on the seventeenth of October, the comment period, appeal period ended on the thirty-first. And your hearing is tonight, um we will be um coming back and have uh to ratify the um. Your recommendations for interviews on, on December fourteenth prior to city council second read ordinance. City council will be workshopping these next Tuesday, and then the first read ordinance on December first and a second read on December. So. Um, again, for all of these, um. I have a rec- I have some recommended findings. Um, that based upon the city that we belong to, the privacy committee, the proposed amendments, they have, it has. All publicly noticed, no surprise that it accomplished in a timely manner, again, I can testify to the fact that it has. The public will provide the opportunity for early and continuous participation, obviously, the series of workshops always were publicly noticed. Um, there was evidence of that, and the public had the opportunity to submit written comments and testify to public hearing before the planning commission. And Jim is our public today who um is claiming to testify. So for all of these amendments, um there are six criteria that you're going to have to deliberate on. Um, and this is why we have to do this separately, the deliberation separately to introduce. Um, we're going to have to decide whether or not an amendment is consistent with comprehensive plan, and whether or not it's detrimental to the public's welfare. Um, you're going to have to decide uh if there's been a change in economic, technological, or land use conditions that warrant modification. Um, whether or not the amendment is necessary to correct an error, whether or not um uh the amendment is necessary to clarify the report intent. Whether or not the amendment is necessary to provide reviews that are not previously been addressed, or whether the amendment is being uh. Necessary by city councils being in the public interest.
Mm hmm.
So first, we're going to talk about building height definition and method of measurement. Um, and this involves changes to city development code ten dot one C, which is the definition section. And each of the zone sections within, within chapter two, because um the previous code had embedded uh the. Building height definition in method of measurement under building text, each every zone. Um, do you want to point out that uh? Thank you. I do want to point out that uh. That uh. We're reviewing this based on comments that we did not include River District uh ten two C dash eight B. Ten two, two E dash eight B and ten two I dash eight B, the three, the three zones within the River District. In the amendments to the method of uh, the method of uh measurement, so we may, we're going to want to um. Uh, we're going to want to consider making that amendment when we get to deliberate.
So I'm sorry, that was just on the cover sheet, you did not specify, you did it in the body.
Oh, okay.
It just wasn't identified on this section of the River District, those, those three sections, this is on the. Code chapter section on the front cover, so it's just a minor, it's not, it has nothing to do with.
All right, thank you, all right, that's good, um and I had like five minutes.
No, that's okay, because I, I didn't give them to you very soon.
So this is what our building, our current building height definition says, and um, and, and again, the standing joke is every time this has come up. In a topographically challenged site, the developer will look at us and say, what? What does that mean? Um, the vertical distance between a reference datum measured to the highest point of the roof, the reference datum shall be selected by either of the following, which yields a greater height of building. Uh, the elevation of the highest adjoining sidewalk or ground surface within a five-foot horizontal distance of an exterior wall of the building. When such sidewalk or ground surface is not more than ten feet above the grade. Or an elevation ten feet higher than the lowest grade when the sidewalk or ground described in subsection one above is more than ten feet above the lowest grade. The height of a stepped or terrace building is the maximum height of any segment of the building. And then um the standard is not included, our chimneys, bell towers, steeples, et cetera, et cetera, um. Uh, although within residential zones, they are included, anyhow, long story short, is that this is, this. One of the challenges with this building height definition is that there's actually a different definition in building code. And so what we have proposed to do is make this consistent with uh the definition in building code, so, and it's still not going to let me do. There we go. So the, the definition, the proposed definition for building height as based upon. That which is found in international building code is the vertical distance from the graded. Plane to the average height of the highest roof surface, not included in the maximum height or chimney bell tower, steeples, blah, 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 blah. Um, uh, within residential zones, bell towers, steeples, and similar features are included within the maximum height and shall conform to the height requirements of the R one, R two, or R three zone. So, and then there's grade or grade plane. Um, and this is, we had a definition for grade but not grade plane, but because it's embedded in the building code definition. We have basically combined the two, because it's a very, they're, the, the definitions were very similar, but used the specific. Wording that was included in international building code. So grade or grade plane is a reference plane representing the average of finished ground level. Adjoining building at exterior walls where the finished reference plane shall be established by the lowest point. Within the area between the building and the lot line, or where the lot line is more than six feet from the building. Between the building and a point six feet from the building. In the case of any sign grade, shall be measured or determined by the sign support structure, which is that's standard. So what we've done, and we've done this in each and every zoning district, um we've made a change to. The section in ten to whatever eight building height, because each zone is the same in each of the zones. But we had, we had a method of measurement um that specifically reiterated the definition within. The definition section, and we just said, method of measurement, building height shall be measured as defined in Article ten one C. Simple and elegant, and elegant. So. Um, again, relevant comp plan goals and policies associated with this, um as with all of them. We've actively involved residents, businesses, and property owners in the governance of the city, and we've done that by inviting them to our workshops, noticing these, and um. Uh, we have from time to time had a uh participant review. Also, Land use school provide a helpful, safe, and sustainable urban environment, uh Land use school plan for growth. Of the city in a cost-effective manner, maintain the urban village character and scenic resources of the community, preserve the character of existing neighborhoods. And support high-quality development, and maintain the health and sus- and, and sustainable local economy. So this, oh, we've got more, governance policy one, um again, this has to do more with reaching out to people, urban policy one. Which is maintaining design standards and design review and uh to ensure that neighborhoods and community centers are developed with minimal impact on surrounding communities. And are consistent with community character. Urban design policy seven, maintain standards that prescribe. Uh, maximum building height and other building design features to give a residential scale and to identi- and, and identity to multifamily developments. And uh. Maintain consistent, fair, and timely regulations that are flexible, responsive, and effective. So that is, and again, that's, we, we speak about this with each and everyone, I'm not going to read them with each and everyone. But um it's important to note that the, the comp plan goals with each of these, because that is one of the points that you need to deliberate on whether or not. Uh, these are. There we go. The second one, the second one is, uh, the second case that we have tonight is the limited use requirements for manufactured homes. And this um specifically is an amendment to the section ten dash two B three C twelve and ten dash two C. Three C eleven, um, and it is specific.
I, I thought we were going to have discussions on each one of these and.
So I'm doing my staff presentation.
Okay, okay.
Then we have, then we accept public co- comment, and then we deliberate one by one.
Okay, okay.
And, and the, the staff presentation is for the benefit of the public.
Got you.
Um, however many we may have. Um, okay, so this, the, the next case is limited use uh regulations for manufactured homes on individual lots. And this is one where um we have found, and, and this really relates specifically. To the mobile home subdivision that's mostly on the south side and a little bit on the north side of Mission Avenue. Over the River District. And um, one of the requirements that we had for design standards was that, that the manufactured homes. Uh, shall have a garage or carport constructed of light materials, uh. Um, one other residences nearby do, so we have a pretty good mix, most of them. But not all of them have garages and carports, but we found that this to be a pretty onerous requirement, um costly requirement. For um, uh, people who are trying to set a new mobile home on a vacant lot. Um, in that area, and so this has come up numerous times, it becomes a code enforcement issue because they set the mobile home. Uh, it, they find that it's cost, they have to meet a forty-pound snow load, it becomes costly to make that happen. One of the reasons why we talked about this being um an environmental justice issue is because this is the only. This is the only place within city code where a residence is required to have a garage or a carport. And so it seems, it, it, it seems that it is somewhat burdensome. I wanted to point out to you the picture, this is actually a picture that I had in my files from code enforcement, so this is, this is what. Many of the, many of the local homes look like in the area in their carports. They do frequently have carports, many of them are metal structures or whatnot, um, some of them are more like this. But at the end of the day, for someone to build new and to meet our code requirements, um it, it's pretty costly to do so. So anyhow, so um, so we're from, we're proposing to eliminate that requirement, again, from an equity standpoint. We don't require of anyone else anywhere else in the city as part of our development, although it seems uh. It seems that that's an important distinction. Again, you will find in the staff report, um you will find a list of relevant uh comp plan goals and policies. I'm not going to read through all of these again, because it would take us too long, but uh. Again, there's the standard governance and engaging the public, et cetera, we do have some housing goals uh that are relevant here, and economic development goal um. And economic development policy. The next one has to do with comprehensive plan amendment, MAP amendments, and we have the, there, there's basically the comp plan map. Needs to be amended based upon Central Valley School District annexation, uh ordinance number two seventy-eight. And Meadowwood Technology Campus uh zone change, uh and land use and zone change, excuse me, ordinance number two eighty-five. And it, it, it actually involves all five maps that we need to change, map number one point three. Which is just shows uh our city boundary map, our, our city boundaries. Uh, map three point two, which is the, the city's cultural landmarks. And uh Megan has been good enough to update um with recent uh additions to our cultural landmarks, and this is a, a, our most up-to-date map. Um, the land use, and again, you'll see the area that was annexed by Central Valley School District back in um. Twenty twenty-one, and you will see the change to the uh Meadowwood Technology Campus here to an M two. Um. Zone. Um, again, the map number five point three, which is annexed areas, again, we needed to add the newly annexed area from the. From the school district, and also we've updated our um. Collectors and arterial maps to, to show, to show streets that have now been constructed. Um, as well as uh, as well as to show the recently annexed areas. And again, um. Relevant comp plan policies you'll find in your staff report. The next uh amendment is changes to the zoning map, and I want to point this out, the changes to the zoning map actually. Uh, were, were addressed um with uh. Two ordinances in the resolution, I'll get to that in a second, but what, what we need to do is we actually need to change. Section ten point two A five, where the zoning map is actually embedded into our development code. And so that's, that's what we're doing here, the changes again have to do with um. Have to do with the annexation with Meadowwood Technology Campus zone change, but we also had um a resolution dealing with um. Address, addressing the zoning for uh centennial properties, split zone parcel in front of Bridge Line High School. So these are the three uh, uh, Central Valley School District ordinance, annexation ordinance number two seventy-eight. Was done late in twenty twenty-one, Meadowwood Technology Campus ordinance number two eighty-five. That was done, I want to say it was March of this year, and centennial split zone property, which was resolved in twenty-two to ninety-seven, which happened sometime this spring. Uh. Anyhow, long story short, all of these zone changes already occurred, we just need to change the map and the ordinance. And again, we've got a series of uh relevant comp plan uh goals and policies, uh and there is a typo on policies. Sorry about that. Uh, the last one, and this is probably the most complex one, is the, the vehicle and bicycle parking standards, and this involves change amendments to. Uh, section ten dash three D and uh River District Development Code, section ten dash three D, so um. Uh. Really, the purpose of the amendments were to update vehicular and bicycle parking requirements to be more consistent with demand based upon land use. To eliminate maximum parking limits, and as we've talked about before, I probably had do more administrative variances. For people wanting to exceed the maximum, because in some cases. The required, that our, our requirements in code were actually tied their heels, and we saw that a lot in terms of. Uh, manufacturing as an example, where the uh, where the minimum parking requirement was. One for every two employees on the largest shift. Um, and maximum was a hundred and fifty percent of that, so. Considering that we have somewhat limited transit, um and uh. Uh, we have people with multiple shift operations that usually have some overlapping parking that became seriously problematic. Um, in other cases, um we've seen that like with credit unions and things like that, where they, where they have. Their particular, their particular experience and demand for their parking is um. Much greater than what our code would allow for. Um, we also have um updated electric vehicle infrastructure based on WAC fifty-one fifty dash zero four two nine. And um this is, this is an evolving, in fact, uh um, we have one code that is in effect now, we have another one that's going into effect in July. And um it's going to continue to evolve, so we've referenced that more than anything else to make people aware, and there's a number of. Exceptions, but the exceptions are changing over time also, so just to try and keep our development community. Aware of the changing requirements and to, and to cause our staff to kind of look at that as we're doing um. Our plan reviews to make certain that, that on, we are applying the latest standard to that. So um, I wanted to point out that um in terms of amendments to the uh parking code, um. Uh. I use the um ITE, so the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual. Um, for that, the electronic version, and use that, and I really stuck with for the, trying to come up with um. Generally where there's, there were large discrepancies, we were close, I didn't necessarily propose an amendment, but there were large discrepancies between. What they considered to be the average and what was in our code, we adjusted accordingly, and so what I'd like to do. Is, and I'm, now I'm going to be challenged to do this again. So um. I'd like to go through this. Let me see if I can stop the share and then share a different screen. There we go. You should be able to see on my screen, so first we'll go through um very quickly, um. And on a high level, the uh changes in uh vehicle and bicycle parking, um we did add new sections for drive-through facilities. And we did um also um add. Electrical vehicle infrastructures, actually, we changed the number on that, so um. In terms of vehicle parking, one of the things that we have seen, um we have um added on. Just generally the minimum parking standards, we did um add a line on to make it clear that off-street parking may be, may. Uh, spaces in garages, carports, parking lots, and our, and or driveways, if vehicles are not parked in tandem. And they're parked in tandem, um it, it, it effectively diminishes the number of parking spaces, and we've seen that to be an issue. Um, and particularly in communities where you have all uh much tighter parking uh requirements. And then just the code itself, as I said. And then just the code itself, as I said. I'm sorry, technical difficulties. So and the table, um we have uh. Uh we've used, as I said, the ITE parking generation. We haven't made a ton of changes. But some of them are are relatively important. Um. Uh so two and three family housing, um we we shifted. It's not showing. Great. Okay, thank you. It's not showing because I don't think I'm on Zoom anymore. Okay, you can see me now. Okay, so a minor change, two and three bit family housing. Uh deleted one point five, we bumped it up to one point seven five. Um similar to multi-family and single-family, the cashed housing. We used to have this broken down by bedrooms. And so uh. The problem with that, and we've seen this over time, is when we do a plan review. And things change in process, and this happens a lot, particularly when we're doing a multi-building apartment complex. And we do the site plan and the parking is all approved in the first building. And by the time I get to building five, six, seven, eight, now they're changing the number of units because may our. Number of bedrooms or whatnot, based upon what's happening in the marketplace. And so we never get that second review, and so that's been a problem. We've seen that happen. Um in several of the apartment complexes that we've gone through. Um we we felt that a simpler approach was to simply just say one point seven five. Spaces per dwelling unit. As you can see, it was one space. So it was um studio or one-bedroom units, less than five hundred square feet were one space per dwelling unit. Um one-bedroom uh units, five hundred square feet or larger. Uh was one point five, two bedrooms was one point seven five, three bedrooms or greater were two spaces. And again, by kind of going with the average of what we see, it just seems like it's a simpler approach. Um more straightforward, and we're not constantly chasing uh changes in our building plans. Rooming and boarding houses, um. We changed from uh. One space. Or. We changed it to two spaces for every three beds from uh. Oh, no, we just added the numbers. We just changed the numbers just to be consistent with the rest of the table. Never mind, dear. Specialty housing, uh. Five spaces. That. That should be one space to bed plus. One space per employee on the largest ship, not five. I'm not sure. I'm not sure of that. Is that does need to be changed.
Give me an example of specialty housing.
Uh most commonly, it's like assisted living. And and again, keeping in keeping in mind that, uh I mean, that is the most common that we see. Um. We do also see like um adult family homes, which are, you know, less than, I think, less than eight bed. But when you when you start to factor in, even if the residents aren't driving, their visitors, their caseworkers, et cetera. Uh doctors' visits, their doctors um. In home care, et cetera.
I think that's a point five.
Oh, is oh, that is, okay. Thank you.
That would make more sense.
It makes a ton more sense. Point five spaces per bed plus one space uh per employee on the largest ship. Yeah. You are correct. I was looking for that, so I can mark it up, and you are correct. Um other changes in here, um. Restaurant bars, ice cream parlors, and similar. Um again, uh we had. Uh one space per four seats um or. Uh one space per one hundred gross square feet, actually looking at. ITE trip generation is one space for one hundred and fifty gross square feet. The other thing, the other problem is the seating calculation is problematic because we don't really know that when we're doing building permit reviews. So it's simpler to keep it at a square footage basis. Theaters, auditoriums, stadiums, uh gymnasiums, community centers, and similar uses, one space per three fixed seats. It was four or one space per one hundred and fifty gross square feet, whichever is greater. And again, this is based upon uh what was in ITE trip generation. Um industrial manufacturing uses um. One space per employee on the largest shift or one space per one thousand gross square feet, whichever um is less. Um. Child care centers. Again, uh we had this at two spaces. Uh per employee, but actually, ITE is saying it's one point five spaces per employee, or one space per four students, whichever is greater. Um chapels and mortuaries, again, a minor change from a hundred and fifty one per one fifty to one per one hundred gross square feet. Again, based upon this, the the data. Same for all of these. These are all based upon what the changes that we've seen on. Uh participant and spectator sports. That was a that was an interesting one because. It was just one space for one hundred and fifty gross.
Can I back up just a second? Uh chapels, churches, et cetera, is that one per. Four or six seats or one per one hundred gross square feet? Is that limited to the auditorium or to the entire building?
So that it so that is uh for the fixed for the fixed seating for the for the assembly area.
For the assembly area, so if they had offices and kitchen and.
So generally speaking, when we do parking calculations, if they had offices, we would look at, we would break up the buildings, so. The assembly area, the offices, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Using the different calculations.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. No. Oh, the sports facilities, that's what I did want to chat about a little bit. So we had one space for one hundred, one hundred and fifty gross square feet, but that calculation did not work for. We have outdoor fields, right? So it is that that was an indoor calculation. So and and very often, what we're doing is there are outdoor fields. Um so uh again, just referencing what was recommended in the um. In the uh. ITE parking manual. And again, this was based upon soccer fields. And again, there's minor differences, but soccer fields were the kind of the um average. So. One of the things that we did uh change is credit for on-street parking. Um. We allowed this only mixed-use zones, and it doesn't make any sense if you have on-street parking. You should be able to, you should be able to count the adjacent on-street parking wherever. Um we do also um. But the the parking spaces do need to be contiguous to the subject property, and that's essential for the calculations because. Um every business on a block can't count the same parking spaces five times. It obviously that doesn't work. Um. We did also. We did also um.
Point of correction.
Yeah.
Item number three, parking spaces shall not should be shall not be located in a manner that would obstruct. There's just a word missing.
Oh, shall not be. Okay.
Sarah.
What?
Where was that at?
So this is on page four.
Credit for on-street parking. Item C, and then if you go down to item. Um. Three.
Not be.
Parking spaces shall not should be shall not be located in a manner that would obstruct.
Good catch. We'll have to make sure we catch that when we talk about this.
Well, that's so that would that would dramatical and typing errors just be corrected.
Oh, good, good, okay.
You don't have to make an amendment.
Thank you. Okay, good.
Um. Parking stall. So we had the so we had the we had a complicated, while it wasn't that complicated, the complicated formula. For um uh compact stalls, but it didn't work. Um but it didn't work as it related to the width dimensions, so um. Uh we felt like it would be easier just to add it. The other thing is that we have um been looking at other jurisdictions. In the area, um uh we have um. Uh reduced our curb length for parallel parking from twenty four to twenty two. And again, as and this is the minimum, they can always do more. But um what we have found is that um that's pretty consistent among jurisdictions. Uh there's one outlier that was less, and then there was one outlier that was more. But at the end of the day, um uh this was, we have granted on. Uh administrative variance, well, it actually wasn't administrative variance, it was a design deviation for this. Um in River District Town Center, and we felt like that made some sense to include that here. And so this is uh. Um and the compact stall, um the changes to compact stalls were actually consistent uh done to. Create consistency with our engineering design standards as it relates to parallel parking spots. Um one other thing that I think that um. You know, we encourage uh shared parking um and parking locations in the River District does include. Um does allow for a reduction of up to twenty percent for shared parking. And um there is, there's some validity, um. There's some validity to the fact that we have shared parking. And think about like the turnover that you have in a business, right? So somebody's leaving and somebody's going. So you have parkings, when you have multiple users, you have more opportunity to take advantage of that turnover. Um uh with less parking spots. Anyhow, long story short is that uh so we proposed this, we've um we have found this to be pretty consistent with. With what other jurisdictions do in terms of shared parking, and it's creates an incentive for people to actually provide the shared parking, which is something that we do try and encourage. Bicycle standards. So this is one that we have run into with multi-family. Um where requiring one bicycle parking space per unit, um we need to acknowledge the fact that uh. Um that's uh. Parking in that's uh. Provision is met when enclosed parking, storage rooms for bicycles are provided. And again, in mixed-use zones. Um we added some language that's consistent with um with what we see both in elsewhere in our development code, where we do allow people to um. Uh. Provide um bicycle parking as part of their frontage improvements or whatever. Um or that can be done, um this is consistent with uh River District. Abductions for storage, again, dealing with that multi-family component for uh. Dealing with bicycle parking differently for for uh multi-family um as you would for. An office or for employees or something like that. Um so bicycle parking shall be at least as well as parking lot for security. There was some language related to signage. That uh was recommended for removal, and we agreed that it was not necessary to have signage there. It's pretty obvious when you have bicycle parking. That it's intended for bicycle parking. Um and then. I think that is pretty much all the drive-through facilities. So one of the things we and we ran into this when we were when um wake-up call, wake-up coffee came in. That we didn't really have any standards for drive-through facilities. And and it generally, it's a good idea that you plan for um. For queuing, et cetera. How many Dutch Brother coffees have you seen that uh back up into the roadway because they don't have enough queuing? So anyhow, long story short is that we really like the standards that were in the River District, and um again, we. We were challenged when we were reviewing it, and we were able to work with wake-up coffee to get what we needed in that. But it it is helpful to have some standard guidelines, and so that's where that came from. And um. Lastly, the electric vehicle infrastructure. We have changed this. We have changed this um to really reference back again because because of the fact that. These are changing, constantly change, they're going to change again um in. July first of next year, and I expect that there'll probably be another round of changes in the not-too-distant future. Um so but we did want to bring it up to speed. Our what we had required previously. Or what we had had indicated previously was no longer consistent, and so we needed to get that up to date. So that's it for the development code side of things. So I'm close this current tale, and we'll go right into River District. So um. Again, one of the things, if you will recall, one of the things that we were trying to do with this is to create some consistency in our expectations. Related to code design, it's or the the codes. In anticipation of the intent to at some point um uh. Potentially next year, actually uh codify River District regulations within the development code for transparency purposes. But um. There are some de- development standards that are beneficial to have consistent. And again, when we we base our parking, et cetera, on data, parking requirements based upon data. Associated with land uses, we think that that's uh the consistency factor is important. So. Uh we did add some language in the purpose section that uh uh. That to make it consistent with uh city development code. Um also the vehicle parking standards. Um again. We similar to what you're going to find these to be consistent with the changes that we made in um. The city development code parking standards, uh rooming and boarding houses, two spaces for three beds. Um auto field uh repair and rental, this was one that was uh. This was one that that's on is. Historically problematic with not enough apartment for auto field repair and rental. Um. And so again, this is a consistent with what we have in the. It's the development standards, but also what what's being recommended by ITE Parking Generation Manual. Um and I'm not going to go through these all over again. Um. And. Credit for on-street parking. This is one where we where we um did try and make it more consistent. With um city development code in part because this becomes very problematic when we're trying to do parking calculations, et cetera. Um uh. On-street parking, really, in terms of the on-street parking. We really need to make certain that the credit for on-street parking is adjacent to. The specific business, because otherwise we have, we have um double, triple, quadruple counting. For all the businesses, if you're saying, oh, well, I've got parking within a thousand feet. Well, yeah, so everybody else on your block also counted that parking space as theirs. Um, so that creates a little bit of a challenge. Um, and again, these standards are pretty much the same, uh, for the same reason. We, we changed this up in terms of the, the, uh, parking stall standards to be consistent with engineering design standards. Uh, we did note that there was, um, um, there was not, um, a section about, uh, accessible parking stalls. So we did want to make it consistent with, uh, city development code. Um, we also, city development code does have a section that talks about availability of facilities. Owner of off-street parking facilities may post a sign indicating that all parking on the site is available only for residents, customers, and/or employees as applicable. Um, and, but again, the signs have to conform to our sign standards. The point on that is that's a, that's a, that's a property right issue that you want to be able, people to be able to protect their property. Um, bicycle parking standards, um, the, the bicycle parking standards, um, again, the River District had it, one parking space for eight students, and we recommend one for, per ten students on, on schools. Um, options for storage, again, similar, um. Again, we added some language that we, we found in the code hazards, bicycle parking shall not impede or create a hazard to pedestrians. So that, that's just a simple addition. Uh, loading space requirements. Off-street loading facilities are intended to provide adequate space to accommodate outside deliveries from large vehicles which cannot be functionally served by normal parking stalls. Off-street loading facilities must be located in such a manner that service vehicles do not block or intrude into public right-ofways or block driveways for parking or circulation. This is, that, that's a standard clause in pretty much every code that I've ever dealt with. And, um, the problems that we have seen when, uh, people areas where we have medians and people decide to park their truck to unload it in median, and people start going around the, the other side on one way. That's, um, that's been an issue recently, in fact. Um, again, the changes here, these are, these are really intended to, um, create some consistency between the two, the two codes. I think we're at the end. E B parking is really the same as what, the, the changes are the same as what's in city development code. And again, just to get that current, so that, that is, um, So I did want to point out that we did receive comments on parking from Joe Frank with Greenstone, and I think Jim's here probably to speak to those very comments. They are appended to the staff report as Exhibit C. And again, I, I'm not going to go through the relevant comp plan policies. They're in the staff report, and, um, and so before we get deliberations, um, it is, uh, we need to open it up for public comment.
Okay, uh, let's start. Let's see, let's just go public comment on any of the five topics that we covered today or so far in, in this meeting, I think. Building height definition, the manufactured home one, the comp plan, the zoning, and then the parking standards. So, uh, I could easily, why don't I just make it simple? How about the first four, building, manufacturing, home, comprehensive plan, or zoning map? Do we have any public comments on any of those? Mr. Frank? Okay, and then, uh, the parking standard, you also have comments on, I suspect. Okay, I, then I would just let you, let you have the floor. On any of them.
Is that working? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. My name's Jim Frank, I'm with Greenstone Corporation. Um, so I'd like to talk about the, the building height one first. Um, you've included River District in this, so you've modified not only the building heights of uh, the city zones, standard zones, but you've modified, uh, the building heights of, um, of the River District. So I, so first of all, I'm kind of curious about if you're, if you're going to do this for projects to have an S A P approval, then why didn't you modify the building heights in Stone Hill? I'm, just a question.
So Stone Hill, Stone Hill is subject to the same, the, the only thing, we didn't change the building heights. We just changed the method of ma- measurement, and that is consistent. The method of management is consistent in, um, in Stone Hill as well. Stone Hill does have followed this, this.
We didn't change, in, in River District, we didn't change the, um, uh, we didn't change, um, the, the, the definition of the grade plane. So I just don't, I'm just curious why you would apply these standards to, anyway, it's, it's not.
So the definition section applies to everyone. The problem is that what was, I would consider, um, erroneously, um, we incorporated the definition into methods of measurement for each and every zone within the city. And that includes Stone Hill, and it includes the River District. You were following what the code, what the code had done, but the problem is that the definition is problematic. It's not going to affect most of the River District because you don't, because it's relatively flat land.
Well, it does affect us though, because the, so let me, let me start. I was just curious about why Stone Hill wasn't included in, in River District was, that's all.
Because they, because they're subject to the, the same development regulations as the rest of the city.
Yeah, um. So I, if I just take a step back here, one of the reasons I think that the staff gave for modifying the, um, the definition of the grade plane is to make it the same as, as in the building code. And the, the reason that there's a height limit in the building code, and the reason that there is a height limit in development regulations is for two very different reasons. And most jurisdictions do not adopt the building code standard for their development code. Most do not. And the reason in the building code that they have a more, what I'll call stringent definition of building height is because it's a, it's a life safety issue. And so as the building gets taller, then they have different fire code requirements and different access requirements for the building. And, and so if you have a building that's, um, daylighting down, they want the height of the building to be measured from the lowest, the lowest grade plane. Because that is the, that's the building that the fire department needs to protect. And, and that the code requirements for one-hour firewalls and all these other requirements are based on that building height. And as you get higher building heights, then the building code standards change, and there's additional requirements for fire safety and so forth. That's the basis. That's the reason that, that they look at building height from a building code standpoint. It's life safety. The building height in the, um, in the development codes for a very different reason. It's, it's to, it's to create the massing and scaling in the community that you want in that particular zone. So you want a particular mass and scaling. And that mass and scaling is basically measured from the sidewalk. So even though the building goes down some, the daylight basement goes down, and there's a lot of houses, for example, that have daylight basement that go down. But the massing and scaling of the neighborhood is really defined by the building height above the sidewalk. And, and that's what we defined this previously. The height of the building was defined, was, was measured from the sidewalk level, essentially. So what this code change does is it essentially shrinks the building height in the, in the development code. That it, it makes it more difficult to comply with because you're measuring it from a different plane than you were before. Now, this has a big effect on us in River District. And because we set our, we set our building heights based on that definition, the original definition of building height, essentially from the sidewalk level. And in the River District, we're doing a wide variety of houses. So we don't have a single-family zone and then a multifamily zone, and the only thing in single-family zones are single-family houses. We have a low-density residential zone that wa- allows a wide range of housing and including an outer townhouses. And so we've got, in many cases, we have townhouses that are essentially functionally three stories because the garage comes in at the ground level. And then you walk up a set of steps, and, and on the second level is you're living in your dining room. And then you go up another level, and you have, and you have your, your bedrooms, for example. So townhouses, because they're, they're, and, and one of the things we're trying to achieve in River District is this walkable community. And, and, and part, and, and part of what's necessary in a walk-up community is you have enough density to support services within walking distance of where people live. So our, our average density in River District is going to be quite a bit higher than the average density in a suburban, you know, a straight suburban development. A straight suburban development in, in Liberty Lake might have three or four units per acre. We might have eight units per acre on average. And you need that density to support transit. You need that density to support, um, businesses so that you have enough density around those businesses to support those businesses. And that's a whole idea of having a walkable mixed-use community. That things are integrated on a finer scale. So we need the ability to do townhouses. And this will be restrictive. This will make it difficult for some of our poundhouse designs to work because our height limit was based on the old definition of the grade plane. So what I'm going to ask you to do is I, I mean, honestly, I'd like you to, I'd like to eliminate River District from these, these height standards and just allow us to have the height standards that we've had that are part of our S A P. And I don't, I don't fundamentally see the point in having a comp plan that permits you to have specific area plans where the development codes can be tailored to that development and then say that you want all the development standards to be the same. It defeats the purpose, defeats the entire purpose of having a specific area plan. And the specific area plan has been fantastic for Liberty Lake. It's resulted in projects like River District and Stone, Stone Hill, which are wonderful projects. They're, they're not the same as a suburban development. But honestly, suburban developments are a thing of the past that you can't afford to build houses on eight thousand square foot lots at, at a price that anyone can afford to pay anymore. And so the future is the kind of things that are happening in Liberty Lake. I mean, you could, you can raise the height limit. So instead of having a forty-five-foot height limit on our low-density residential zone, you can make it fifty-five. But I, I, I'd really ask you, just allow us to maintain the standards that we've had in the River District because they're aimed at the kind of project that we're trying to develop there, and it's different than the kind of project that dominates the south side of the freeway here. Um, and, and that comment is also going to apply to the parking standards. Very different what we're trying to accomplish in River District and, and what you're trying to accomplish in other areas of the city where you don't have these same mixed-use zones. You don't have the same walkability. Um, I mean, if you live in, you know, if you live in the gardens or something, or if you live in the estates, you can't walk anywhere. I mean, maybe you, you can walk to a golf course clubhouse or something, but you can't walk to any services. And, and so you have to drive there. And the fact that you have to drive results in different set of requirements than you would have if you can walk. And so the reason in River District that we put that little cluster of retail at Harvest Parkway in Indiana is so people that live in that end of the neighborhood have a place they can walk to. Have a restaurant they can walk to. They have childcare that they can walk to. Um, they have a coffee shop that they can walk to. That's the reason that we did it is so that we can maintain that walkability. And you don't want to destroy that, that whole concept, and it just requires different standards. So the changes here on the commercial zones in River District probably don't make any difference. But on the low-density residential zone, it does make a difference, and and I'd ask either that you remove it from the height limit, or you just make the height limit in that zone fifty-five feet to compensate for the difference in the definition.
Jim, which would be more? Because I see, I see you trying to say, let's do one or the other, obviously. What would be the one that would have the most impact on two things? One, a positive impact on what you're currently wanting to develop at River District without having to come here for any variances. It seems to me that keeping it as it is, is going to be more consistent.
Probably, it's going to be simpler.
It's going to be similar, but even the ten feet could be problematic at some point.
Yeah, and it, it's going, it's just going to be simpler, I think, to administer that there is a set of standards in the River District, and we're very familiar with what they are. The staff is familiar with what they are, so just allow us to have a set of standards that allows us to accomplish the goals that we have for that community. And then apply your other standards to the rest of the city that doesn't have that. Their goals are different, and the standards are different because of that. I can give you, I mean, on this parking thing, look, I could sit here for two hours and go through every section and explain, you know, the problems that they'll cause for us. But instead, just let me give you two or three examples of, of, of the problems. So like on, one of the last things was changing the bicycle parking space, the bicycle parking for a school. We had added eight. One parking space for every eight students. You're relaxing it and making one park, one bicycle parking space for every ten students. So that's going to reduce by twenty-five percent the bicycle parking at a school. Now, why would you do that? In a, in a walkable community like ours, where we want kids to walk to school, we want them to ride their bike to school. We don't want their parents to drive them to school or feel like they have to drive them. And what that means is you need more parking for bikes at schools, not less. You need more. And, and so that's, so like, we don't, we don't want that. We don't want to relax, we don't want to, to have that problem. And all of us see this. I mean, all you have to do is drive down Multer on a school day and see that there's more bicycles parked at that school than there are. and see that there's more bicycles parked at that school than there are cars parked there. We need more parking for bicycles at schools, not less. The, another example is, I'm just going to use the example of little uh multifamily project that we did at Harvest Parkway in Mission, right there by the traffic circle. We've got about forty units there. We meet the parking standards because every unit there has a garage and then every unit has a parking space in front of their garage. Now, what you're, what you're proposing here is that we not be allowed to count for parking that parking space in front of their garage. So now we're short of parking. That project would require that we build a forty-space parking lot to go with that project. You have to build forty, forty parking spaces. So instead of having it look like it does, it it looks like a nice project. There's no big parking field with that project. Now, all of a sudden, we have to have a big parking field with the project. Why would you do that? It's not what we, it's not what we want for our project. We don't want people, we don't want these big parking fields. We're trying to encourage people to walk and ride their bike. And so there's just no possible way that we can live with a standard like that. And then um the, the shared parking is another example. And we've done shared parking, for example, at Kendall Yards. Everyone that's been down there can see that we have all the parking there shared. The reason that it works is that the parking peak for different uses is not the same. So the peak parking for an office space is not the same time as the peak parking for a restaurant. And that's not the same as the peak parking for a movie theater. They all have different peaks. When you're only building for one use, you've got to design for the peak of that use. Right? But if I'm putting three or four or five or ten uses together, I no longer have to design for the peak. And what we found is that the parking, the amount of parking you need total reduces by almost fifty percent. And so our parking ratios, the standard parking ratio for offices, for example, are four parking spaces per thousand square feet. In Kendall Yards, we have two parking spaces per thousand square feet. And and it's in that shared, that shared parking, we save about fifty percent of the size of the parking lot. And there's nothing more terrible, really, than driving down Sprague Avenue and seeing these big parking fields in front of shopping centers and whatever. It's not the kind of development that we want. It's not the, it's not the vision that we have for River District. And it's not the vision that the people that live in River District want. They don't want a bunch of vacant parking fields that are designed for some maximum possible thing that might never happen. And you know, people the other thing that we have data on, because we've done a fair number of walkable mixed-use communities is that if you look at, we've done a lot of traffic studies and those traffic studies have projected the traffic volumes that we'll get. And then we go back five years later and we count the actual traffic volumes that we measured against what was projected by the Traffic Engineers Manual. And what we found in mixed-use communities, and this is something that's been documented in a lot of mixed-use communities across the country, that you have about a thirty percent reduction in traffic. In other words, what that means is about a thr about thirty percent of the trips that people would normally take with their family become walking trips or bicycle trips rather than vehicle trips. And that reduces the parking demand by itself, reduces the parking demand. And you see that in River District. I mean, look, you see all kinds of people from Tertina walking across the street and getting coffee at New Look Coffee. You see people that live in the apartments, you know, down the road, walking down to the coffee shop or getting lunch at Three Ninjas. People are walking. And when people walk to those businesses, then it reduces the demand for parking. I mean, Joe outlined a whole bunch of changes and and some of the changes don't make any difference. Some of them have a very significant negative effect. And so again, my suggestion is this, that the simplest thing to do is to just exclude River District from these changes. And allow us to have the standards that are necessary for us to accomplish the vision that we have for that mixed-use walkable community in River District.
Um, wha- what would be the goal? Um, not to allow for the grandfathering in of the standards by which they have already been developing and want to continue developing, whether it's the height restriction or parking. What would be the what, has there been objection from other people? Or what would be the object?
So i- if if I may maybe respond to some of Mr. Frank's comments. Uh, so first of all, um, in terms of the shared parking, Jim, we didn't change your shared parking requirements. We in fact embraced it in the city's standards. So that's number one. Um. As it relates to building height, I I'm hearing what you're saying, and it is a different situation because you are relatively level over in the river. I mean, obviously, there's some topographic changes. The definition that we have now is super problematic when we're dealing with um, development on Legacy Ridge and up on the hill. We've had a number of developments that um, binding site plans, et cetera, where we are dealing with real challenges in this interpretation of building height. And so it was our intent to address those, but it is a pretty com, uh, my problem is not so much with grade or grade plane. My problem is with the complexity of the definition of building height as it relates to the varying topographies and whatnot. And um, and so I don't necessarily see a challenge if um, although your definition section is the same as ours. So that, so so therein lies, therein lies a challenge. I'm not sure quite how to address that. Um, but um, but the building height issue, the building height definition was more to address a problem with uh, with our topographically challenged um, uh, areas in the south side of the freeway.
Um, so I think what we're asking is that the previous existing definitions remain in place for River District. And then I I'm I'm not I'm not arguing that you don't have some reason to clarify these for the development that you're doing in Legacy Ridge and so forth. I'm just saying that for River District, the existing standard definitions would continue to apply as they do now.
And just a few other comments. Um, uh, so again, the the um, again, the shared parking, as I said, um, we actually embraced it in our mixed-use areas on as well. We're trying to encourage shared parking as well. I understand, I I agree with you that shared parking does reduce the demand for for because of the various uses, not a question there. Um, bicycle parking at the schools, um, that that actually was quite a challenge for the middle school. And we're, we see that, um, we we do see that, um, the massive, as massive as the amount of bicycle parking is that's being provided, it's not, it's not that it's not being used, it's, but it's not, it's not absolutely full either. If there was greater demand, that would be one thing. But um, but again, um, I I guess I I understand what you're saying about the value of having uh, having more bikes, et cetera, but it doesn't necessarily change the pattern of how how students are going to use them. Um, and that was really based upon our experience with um, both the high school and the middle school in terms of problems with the with bicycle parking being um, uh, being challenging for them.
Yeah. I mean, my examples might not have been perfect. I wasn't all I was trying to do is pick out a couple of examples to try to point out that what we're trying to accomplish in our neighborhood is different than than what's happening in the balance of the city. And we would like to retain the parking standards that we have. If we don't do that, then I'm forced to go over with you every single standard. Every, I mean, I could sit here, like I said, for two hours and go through every one of them. I don't want to do that. I I feel like we should be allowed to maintain the standards that have been approved there for fifteen years and they're working. It's not like we have some big problem that we're trying to solve. And and like I said, maybe the examples I quickly pulled out of my head weren't the perfect examples, but we would like to retain the parking standards that are in the SAP today and retain those for the balance of the River District development. And I'm not here to criticize or comment on what you're trying to do for the balance of the city. I mean, some of it I agree with and some of it I don't, but that's true of everything in life, right? We're not going to agree on everything. But we have a mission and a vision for River District that we want to accomplish. And parking is critical to that vision. And and we spent a lot of time developing those standards and we've used them and we'd like to retain them. Any, any additional comments?
I'd like to ask the question again. Uh, I might want to be a little bit louder because I have a silly mask on. I pull it off to like mask my question.
Oh, excuse me. I'd like to ask that question again. Um, may not have been clear. Was there or has there ever been objections to the standards they have been using there? Firstly, and secondly, if the use of those standards, whether they were the height standards or parking, have already been executed to some level of superiority over there, what would be the goal to reverse some of that? Or change some of that, or alter some of that, or now require some of that? Uh, moving forward when they haven't finished the build-out based on the current SAP, I find questions in my mind
Right.
that why would we stop something? Or not grandfather it in? Maybe that's not the right thing.
No, it's so it it would be grandfathered in. We don't like that word. It's
Well, what is the word?
Legal non-conforming use.
Right, okay.
But but let me say a couple of words on that. So um, have there been challenges? Well, one of the things is with the tandem parking, where we've seen problems with it is in the area of Bitterroot, et cetera. That's one where we where we have a lot of parking problems. Um, we have issues with um, people parking inappropriately. Um, it's, parking is tight there. Um, in terms of, in terms of the mixed-use commercial area, the Knoll, et cetera, that development has just begun, but we have run into some challenges as it relates to calculations of parking spots, counting of on-street parking, et cetera. Um, again, that, I I think that it's um, we can simply clarify the fact that that um, adjacent parking, uh, only the adjacent on-street parking can count towards a particular business. They do have a lot of shared parking. They have um, some, a- again, some good, some good standards within there that we did keep consistent. Uh, so I I think that the building height thing, I am, a- as I said, I'm, I I'm not opposed to trying to deal with that a little bit differently. Right now, we do have right now, we do have um, the definition actually within, the definition section applies to both River District and City Development Code, just as uh, like, like the sign code as an example, the sign code is exactly the same also. But having said that, I don't necessarily see a problem. I I and I have to, I I have to look at it. Um, but I believe that if we kept the language in the River District um, in the River District zones as it relates to the method of measurement, that that would avoid the problem of the changes in the definition. Um, so that would preserve what uh, what uh, Mr. Frank is trying to do in terms of in terms of the development. I don't have an issue. The, where we have the issue with with the building height definition is in areas where we've got huge variations in in um, uh, where we're building on hillsides. And that's not the River District. So so I have no problem with that. Um, a- a- again, I certainly, I I certainly have there been problems? I think that we haven't really seen the commercial built-out. I I do recognize uh, the success of Mr. Frank's um, development um, in Kendall Yards. But that's also in a very urban setting. They also have the walking shed for population is much, much greater. Um, very transit-oriented, very, very well-served by transit. Um, so I think that there are some differences, but again, um, but again, that is it is for this body to recommend and it is for city council to decide whether or not um, as I recall, we were, we focused principally on parking in the um, city development code. And the question was raised by this body as to whether or not we should also be looking at um, River District. So that's, that's my recollection of how that went down. But again, you are the body that um, here's a testimony. You make the recommendations to city council and the city council will make the decisions accordingly. So um, I think um, all good questions. Uh, I, did I miss any? Did I miss any point?
No, you didn't miss any question and I appreciate clarification. Thank you.
Uh, I have a question with regard to one thing you said, Jim. If you have a garage in, under the proposed changes, then the parking in the driveway is not allowed?
It's not that it's not allowed, it's that you don't get to count both spaces because historically what's happened is that um, um, if you have tandem parking, two, two vehicles and you've got a garage and tandem parking spot, there's a whole lot of jockeying. The other thing that typically happens is the garage gets filled and it's not a parking spot anymore.
Well, yeah, that happens a lot.
It does happen a lot.
But is that in, in but in light of that, are you saying, Jim, that your forty-unit project would require forty parking spaces?
You're, yeah, you're increasing the parking requirements, first of all, to one point seven five per unit. So have a garage and a parking space, but only get credit for one. Only get credit for one parking space, that's a garage. I don't get credit for the space in front of it. So now I'm short. And if I have fifty units there and it's fifty times point seven five, so I need another forty, I need another forty parking spaces. And I, the only way I get forty parking spaces is to build a forty-space parking lot. It's the only way I can get it.
And and Jim, point of clarification, it wasn't an increase. In fact, um, a two-bedroom right now is one point seven five. The three-bedroom is two parking spots. The, this was actually a simplification.
Yeah, but I I just used that as an example, the one seven five is an example. It, the the main point is we're not getting credit for the space in front of the garage, you know, and same thing happens in houses. People, you know, if you have a house and you have a three-car garage, you know, one, one base being used for storage. one, one bays being used for storage. And you don't tell people that they can't, I mean, what are you going to do? You know, tell people they can't store stuff in their garage and park in their driveway? I mean, it's human nature. It's what they do. But they don't do it a lot. And we actually have requirements. We, we have, because we have a property management company, we try to prevent as much as we can, people filling their garage and parking outside all the time because we don't want cars parked outside all the time. So anyway, it's, it's, we're, it all's working. That's a project that you can drive by any day of the week. There's no parking problem there. You know, it's not like there's a problem. And it's not like people are parking all over the street and on mission or whatever. And while it might be a little inconvenient for some people, it all works and families accommodate, they make accommodations for it. Like if mom and dad know that dad always goes to work first, then he parks behind mom. You know, it, it's not like they have to go out there and do it. It's just the little daily things in life that you, you adjust to as human beings. And there is a significant negative consequence to using a lot of our land for big parking fields that sit empty ninety percent of the time. It affects the visual appearance of the community. I don't, I don't believe that it's the kind of community that we want Liberty Lake to look like. Even on Liberty Lake Drive, you know, we're trying to get people to front the street rather than having these big parking fields in front of grocery stores. It, that's not what we, I mean, we're dealing with something that existed before the city of Liberty Lake was formed. But that's not what we want our city to look like. We don't want our city to look like, our downtown to be a strip mall, you know? And so I just, this is a passionate thing for me. You could probably tell, but almost every jurisdiction in the world is reducing parking standards, not increasing them. And, and, um, and so we just like to maintain the parking standards that have worked for us. We spent a lot of time developing. They're working for us and we just like to maintain those for the balance and duration of the project. And look, if we get something wrong, and there are times when we get something wrong, we fix it. We're, we're not going to have a situation in River District where we're creating some big problem and then we're just going to leave it. You know, we're here for thirty or forty years. And I think the history of what we've done here is demonstrated that we're not known as perfect. You get something wrong, you just fix it and move on. And, and so I'm not saying that every standard that we have is absolutely perfect, but the bulk of them have worked really well and we want to be able to continue to do that. Thank you.
Of course, our, our question isn't with Greenstone. You have been, just have done a wonderful job. Our question are those who know not Greenstone, who may follow you. And so codifying this really has to look beyond even, uh, your stellar work.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand that. Thank you.
Please say a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I have a couple of thoughts. I just wanted to, I'm really focused on some of the affordability of what we get out of townhomes. Uh, not everybody has worked for six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, which is what some of these homes are built on their own loss or coming to. I think having some flexibility for townhomes and those types of buildings in River District is important. I would hate to see those go away. It comes back down to affordability also. We talked about forcing a developer to build a forty lot parking lot and what that could be to rent prices. And we're going to have to maintain that and have to clear that. I just think that you need to be careful getting Liberty Lake to be more affordable for people. Because not everybody can afford, you know, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, I think you made an interesting point about having this process in, in place for a number of years. I'm a resident of the River District. I walk in your love coffee every weekend. Um, I drive there also and it's freezing like it is outside right now. But I think it's important to recognize it's different. Now, I am not going to stand up changing if this comes back up again and that has to be variance over in Meadowland Park because they want to do this. I think that this rule will take place, these changes will take place in Greenstone House. Deal with that on mixed use development select Meadowland Park. I think we have to give some leeway and set that this product has been going on for a number of years. And that's why I want it to be going out of the residents and the local community. Thank you.
So are there any more public comments or any comments from the commissioners? So let's go ahead and go through, I'm, I'm going to, if it's okay, I'm going to go look at the ones that are not contentious right now and get those off of our docket. And then I will go through the ones that may be contentious, starting with the building height one. And, and then moving on to the parking is the last one to work tonight. And if we are unable to get to it, then it'll put it back into a workshop or another public hearing. So.
Oh, we have to, you have to deliberate tonight.
We have to do something, but I'm.
You have to do something. I- if you, if you do not finish it tonight, then you're going to have to schedule a session.
That's correct.
Because we have, there's no time left.
What time is it? Are we out now? Yeah. So we can always not approve it.
That, that is true. You, you recommend not.
Right, to the, for our thing. So let me go through these. I'm going to, I'm going to put these off or get the ones that I don't believe are an issue on our, on our thing. So let's start with the garage. The garage is one and I'll, I'll run through this on conclusions. Uh, I'm going to start right in for our criteria for approval. Uh, Lisa went over that early, earlier on that, on what we have to meet, the one of the six criteria.
Stuff on the screen right now.
And, yeah, any one of the six. So I'm going to just go through on conclusions. And if anybody has any comments while I go through these conclusions, let me know. I've, is everybody caught up on? This is for the home, the mobile homes and garages and carports. There, uh, here's what I've, I've put down and, and if you don't like it, let me know if you think there's something else going on. The proposed amendment is consistent with our comp plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. The proposed amendment is warranted by a change in economic, technological or land use conditions. And I look at that as economic for what our manufactured homes are. The proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error. The proposed amendment is not necessary to clarify a meaning or an intent. The proposed amendment is necessary to provide for pr-proposed use that was not previously addressed. I, we're deleting a proposed use that was previously being, so I, I said is, you can argue that as is not. It's, we're taking a, a use away. And then the proposed amendment is necessary as being in the public interest. I have any comments on that? I'm going to go on then our recommendation. And I will read it as, as I believe it's going to be. And I will say this is for approval right now. And, and we'll get a, a, a motion on that after I finish. Recommendation in the matter of the amendment to the City of Liberty Lake Development Code to remove the requirement for manufactured homes on individual lots to have carports or garages. The City of Liberty Lake Planning Commission does hereby recommend to the city council that the amendment be, and I'm going to take a, ask for a motion on approved.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second. Okay, so all in favor of approved? Uh, do we need a roll call?
Yes, we do.
Let's do a roll call on that.
Richard Siler?
Approved.
Pam Olson? You're muted, Tim.
Approved now.
Stephen Ramirez?
Approved.
D.G. Garcia? D.G., approved, excuse me. Paul Brown?
Approved.
Jim Bomker?
Approved.
And Dale Robb?
Approved. So that motion passes. Uh, let's go ahead and go to the next one, please. The next one is going to be the, and there will be two of these that are very similar, but they're both have to, the annexations. Uh, and the change of land use for the Meadowwood Campus. Again, the sixth criteria. This one is, uh, how do I know? How do I do this one? Zero, zero, nine? Yeah, zero, zero, nine, twenty-two, case number, uh, twenty, twenty-two, zero, zero, nine. This proposed amendment is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to public welfare. The proposed amendment is warranted by a change in economic, technological or land use conditions. The proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error. The proposed amendment is necessary for clarifying a meaning or intent. Again, that one is always a, you can go either way. The proposed amendment is necessary to provide for proposed use that was not previously addressed. And the proposed amendment is deemed necessary to be in the public interest.
That was, was comp plan maps or the zone?
Uh, zero, zero, nine, which is the comp plan maps. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. You did. Hopefully you did that right. That's the five maps that we talked about earlier. Uh, recommendation in the matter of the case, number L U A two, zero, two, two, dash, zero, 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 nine, an amendment to the City of Liberty Lake, twenty fifteen, twenty, two, zero, three, seven, comprehensive plan to update comprehensive plan maps to include property annexed by ordinance number two, seven, eight, to include the land use designation of R two mixed residential for the recently annexed property and to reflect the land use designation change of the M T C property from I industrial to M two as established by ordinance two, eight, five. The City of Liberty Lake Planning Commission does hereby recommend to city council that the amendment be, and I'm going to say approved again, uh, any discussions? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion we approve as is.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, a roll call, please.
Richard Siler?
Approved.
Pam Olson?
Approved.
Stephen Ramirez?
Approved.
D.G. Garcia?
Approved.
Paul Brown?
Approved.
Jim Bomker?
Approved.
And Dale Robb?
Approved. Yeah, unanimous there. And so we'll move on to now, this is the, the last of these. Oops. Did my paperwork correct here? This one is going to be for the L U A twenty, twenty-two, zero, zero, one, zero, which is the, uh, what do I call it? That, that municipal code ten, two, A, dash, five. And that's for the zoning map to add, add, uh, designation and also for the, the annexed properties. Let me get my. Okay, so this proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is not detrimental to public welfare. The proposed amendment is warranted by change in economic, technological or land use conditions. The proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error. The proposed amendment is necessary to clarify the meaning or intent. The proposed amendment is necessary to provide for proposed use that was not previously addressed. And the proposed amendment is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. So I have a recommendation is in the matter of a case number L U A two, zero, two, two, dash, zero, zero, one, zero, an amendment to the City of Liberty Lake Municipal Code ten, dash, two, A, dash, five, to update the City of Liberty Lake zoning map to include property annexed by ordinance number two, seven, eight with a zoning designation of R dash two mixed residential to reflect the zoning designation change of the M T C Meadowwood Technology Campus property from I to M two as established by ordinance number two, eight, five and to reflect the zoning designation change of the Centennial property from both P, public semi-public institutional and M two community center mixed use to only M two. The City of Liberty Lake Planning Commission does hereby recommend to the city council that the mu-amendment be approved. Can I get a motion? So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay, again, another roll call vote, please.
Richard Siler?
Approved.
Pam Olson?
Approved.
Stephen Ramirez?
Approved.
D.G. Garcia?
Approved.
Paul Brown?
Approved.
Jim Bomker?
Approved.
And Dale Robb?
Approved. Okay, that motion goes, uh, passes and we'll move on to now the building height. I gotta get my paperwork here again one more time, guys. Thank you. On the building height, uh, one, let's look at that one. So commission, we, we have a choice here. We can either, before I, I go in and read it all, we can either approve this as it's written, as is in front of us, or we can look at it with modifications or we cannot approve it. Uh, and not approving is our, again, the recommendation to the council to not approve this as it's written, uh, which would, which if they would agree with us, then they'd put it back in our hands. If they disagree with us, they would approve it uh, on that one, or we can provide a modification. So.
Can I make a motion to that effect? Just on the consideration of time to, to make the motion not to approve, to make the recommendation not to approve it as presented?
You can amend it also.
I know.
Okay.
Just wanted to be sure.
There's just, there's just two, and it might be because I'm, first time I've looked at it. And I have enough questions that I would rather say, let's just, there have been enough questions in my mind to suggest that where I'm comfortable would be, let's make the recommendation that it not be removed, that it not be approved. And if it comes back to us, then we can deliberate more. And I say that with deep appreciation for everybody who's already spent significant time. So if it dies with the lack of a second, so be it.
No, I'm going to second it. And the reason why I'll second it is because, uh, I was under the impression that hostage change was more of an administrative thing. It's more of a technical thing. I, I was not under the impression that was actually going to cause hurt burn. And, uh, so based upon that, I would second the motion that we, that we not approve it. You have to take another look at this thing.
You need to, you need.
So let's go through our conclusions, guys. And then we can, we can go decide whether we meet any of the criteria to, to at least move on, we're on this thing. So the proposed amendment is or is not consistent with comp plan and is or is not detrimental to public welfare. Again, I thought it was with, it is consistent, uh, it may be detrimental to the public welfare though. If, if we go with our, our public, uh, speaking here, I'm not quite, I still don't quite understand how this amendment messes up parking garages underneath a building because it's still a sidewalk issue. So I'm not sure how I would ever approach this as a River District problem.
We're talking about the building.
Yes.
Okay.
Because I, I think the discussion was regarding a, a three-story building, the first story being a parking garage and limited to forty-five feet. What does that do to the? But the grade would still be at the sidewalk level. So I don't, that was not a daylight basement issue.
Yeah.
So unless I have an objection, I'm going to say the proposed amendment is consistent with our comp plan. So unless I have an objection, I'm going to say the proposed amendment is consistent with our comp plan and is not detrimental to public welfare.
I would probably disagree and say that it could be. And I'm going to land on what you had said. It may be detrimental. I could see potentially where it could be. So it's not binary for me.
I agree with that.
So, so what we've done in the past when we, when there's a disagreement is we, we get a head count of who, who thinks it's, so everybody agrees that it may be consistent with the comp plan, but it, but that it may or may not be detrimental. So I need a head count of who thinks it may be detrimental.
So go ahead and do that. Let's see who's not. Who thinks it is detrimental?
I would.
I don't, I say it is not.
Tim Olson?
I believe it is.
You believe it is detrimental, Scotty?
Yes.
Steven Ramirez?
Agreed. Yes.
DG Garcia?
Agreed.
Please, please say it is or is not so that we're consistent with what's written.
I believe it is detrimental.
Paul Brown?
Is.
Is not.
I believe it may in fact be detrimental.
So we have five to one says it is detrimental. That's five to two, I'm sorry. Sorry. I didn't count me. Okay, let's do the next one because we only have to meet one of these six items to, any of the following applies. The proposed amendment is not warranted by a change in economic, technological, and/or land use conditions. Everybody okay with that? The proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error. The proposed amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. The proposed amendment is not necessary to provide for proposed use that was not previously addressed. The proposed amendment is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. Or is not?
I think I would, I would lean to is not.
So do you want to have another, let's do another roll call vote on is or is not on this, on number six and the, on whether it's being in the public interest, which is very similar to one on detrimental public welfare. It is necessary to be in public interest.
Okay. Tim Olson?
Is.
Steven Ramirez?
Is.
Paul Brown?
Is not.
DG Garcia?
Is not.
Jim Bomker?
Is.
And Dale Robb.
Is not.
Again, so that one says the amendment, four to three would say it is not deemed to be necessary in the public interest. It is not deemed necessary as being in the public interest. So now we'll go.
So you, you have a motion in the second to deny. Do you want to just take a roll call vote?
Do I have to read it to do that? Oh, okay. Then, then let's go. We have a, a motion and a second to deny this, to not approve it. Our recommendation to the city council of not approving these, these amendment. So another roll call, please, for not approved.
So, Richard Siler?
So I'm going to say nay since it's for not approved.
Tim Olson?
Yay, disapproved.
Steven Ramirez?
Nay, to disapprove.
Nay. DG Garcia?
Nay, to disapprove?
So, so let's, so what, what I've written is that we're not going to approve this thing. So it's a yay to not approve or a nay to.
Sorry, I slipped on that. Yay, do not approve, Meyer.
And, and who is just before him? Was that Stephen? Stephen, can you just clarify what your position was again?
Prove or deny? You're muted.
I want you to approve or deny. Yes.
You wanted to read not approve.
So he was a yay.
Okay, thank you.
Tim Olson, there's also a, a yay?
A yay to disapprove.
Thank you. And then Paul Brown?
Uh, yay to disapprove.
Jim Bomker?
Yay, to disapprove.
Dale Robb?
Yay, to disapprove.
Okay, so the recommendation will be to not approve as written for the city council.
We put four, another four motions now?
No, we're done on that one. Unless, unless someone has the words to go or, or ability to do it, we've already voted on it. So we would have voted, you would have had to, yeah, you would have had to do something else. Not now.
Not, 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 not now that you've voted to deny it was. Again, let me be, let me be perfectly clear before we get into the parking. You have three options always to approve or to recommend approval, to recommend approval with modifications or to deny.
May I have a clarification? When the motion was brought forward, it was brought to deny or to approve. It was not brought forward as a motion to amend.
So, so no, I read that we have three choices. We have a choice to approve, we have a choice to amend, or we have a choice to deny. A motion was brought to not approve it.
And I, and I clarified, I clarified with Paul that he knew that it could be, it could be amended. He said, no, I'm, my motion is to deny.
Because he thought it was too hard to go amendment right now. So.
Just needed to clarify.
Yes.
Thank you.
Same goes on this one.
So question, Richard?
Go ahead.
And or maybe Lisa, if we make a recommendation to amend this to the city council, does that get pushed back to us? I mean, the council can approve that or not approve that, correct?
We have to provide the amendment to them as we want it to be written. So if we, if we push that to, to approve it with modifications, then, then we would have to sit here and do that.
So let me, so, so let me just, let me just be clear on this. So you could simply, and you don't have to do all the amendments. You can direct, you direct me to do the amendments. But you could, you could propose to approve the parking in city development code and recommend amending it. Your, your, your amendment could be, could be recommending to amend it to eliminate the changes in River District.
Right. We could ignore River District on the, on our modification, but that's, that would have to be proposed to us and then through a, through a motion. And then, and then when you do that motion, you would at least outline what you want that motion to be with modification that would do whatever you want it to do as a, as a body here.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, please, for clarification. Can a motion be made to, can a motion be made to reject the prior motion? And to make a, a second motion?
We could have, or you vote.
Can we do that at this time?
You could.
I would like to make a motion to reject our prior motion and to move to amend with clarification.
That's two.
A motion to. I'm.
Well, you have to, first you're going to have to reject.
I would like to reject the prior motion. And now I make the motion, correct?
You can make that motion. You could explain to your colleagues, your intent to propose an amendment.
And I would like to propose an amendment that would allow us the opportunity to make amendments.
So I'm not sure I know what's on the table. Is it, are we talking building height?
Yes.
Is that the one we're talking about? The one we voted to not approve?
Correct.
Okay, and the motion was on the floor. We, we just voted for all to not approve that amendment. And I think it was based on Mr. Brown's comments that it's not just the River District one. It's also, he's concerned with what it might do to non-River District building also. I think that's what you said.
I'm not sure what I.
I'm not sure where you're going, DG. Are you trying to, are you going to make the amendments to look at eliminating River District like we just maybe talked about for the other?
Correct, sir.
So, so that would mean that just clarity here, if we go backwards on our vote, that would mean we would eliminate it for the River District. And then we would vote that it's okay for the rest of the city to have the building height defined and the grade plane defined as we've got it written in the amendments right now.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Does that, is everybody in line? Is that what everybody's saying?
There needs to be two motions. The first is to rescind.
I, I got, I got that. I, I understand. I just want to make sure, before we go through both motions, let's make sure I know what we're doing so that I'm not undoing something unnecessarily.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what's on the table. So if we go, if we go undo what we did, then we have the opportunity, I think what DG's proposal is, is eventually make a motion that would eliminate the River District from the building height changes.
Yes, sir.
That's, that would be the purpose of going backwards and not recommending it to the city council to approve this. Or recommending it as not approved. Yep. Okay, so I think now let's, and I'm going to back up a little bit. Let's get the motion squared away. I need a motion on, on revisiting our vote and our.
Say to rescind the prior vote.
To rescind the prior vote on the building height amendments.
So move?
Okay.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, a roll call vote on this, please. Yay.
Tim Olson?
Yay.
Steven Ramirez?
Yay.
DG Garcia?
Yay.
Paul Brown?
Yay.
Jim Bomker?
No. No.
Nay.
Nay.
And Dale Robb?
Yay.
Okay, now let's go back through. DG, I think you have the floor now. You're the one that wanted to go down this path of doing something differently. So would you let us know what you want to do?
I'd like to make a motion to eliminate the River District from the building height restriction requirements.
So you want to approve this recommendation with a modification?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion to approve this recommendation with a modification.
And, and that modification, just so that we don't get ourselves crossed here, would.
I could give terminology, please, so that I tell you what code sections you're, you're eliminating.
That's what I was going to just do.
Perfect.
If that's okay. Yeah, that means we're going to go to the, the, let me get it right here. The. Yeah, I gotta find. You have it easier than I have it because I don't know.
So we're going to eliminate amendments to, you're proposing to eliminate amendments to River District Development Code or Development Regulations ten, dash, two, C, dash, eight, B, ten, dash, two, E, dash, eight, B, and ten, dash, two, I, dash, E.
Yes. Now that I got my papers right, that is correct. So that was the motion to eliminate that. Did I get a second?
Second.
Can I, can I make a comment or do I have to wait?
Go, go ahead.
Okay. So again, the way that this building height was originally, from my original understanding was that this is more of a, of a procedural issue to try to clarify how to calculate building heights. Because the original standard or the original wording was too confusing. And well, the way it was presented, or at least the way I understood it, is that it was not going to be an issue or a problem with respect to any other developments or districts or anything like that. It was more to try to get some clarification. Now I'm hearing, no, this really, the way it's worded, it could be an issue for me. And so I would like the staff to really explain to us why it could be an issue in the River District. It won't be an issue someplace else. That's another, you see what I'm saying?
I, I do see what you're saying, and I'm having, I'm having difficulty seeing, seeing Jim's point initially. I, I have difficulty, I, I've read it. I've sat here and read it. And I don't see.
I don't want to carve out this one until we understand, until you understand.
I don't see.
So can I, can I maybe help there? From what I read, when you look at, it all has to do with the grade and the grade plane. So the reference plane shall be established at the lowest points within the area between the building and the lot line. So if you have a daylight basement, the lowest point is between that daylight basement and your lot line. And now you, you do the, from the grade plane to the average height of the highest roof surface is how high it goes. So the grade plane is now at maybe ten feet above that, right? Is that your sidewalks and everything else?
Right. So why do we need to change anything there?
And so, so I think what happens is when you, the reference plane shall be, and so the average height to the highest roof surface from the grade plane.
It gets really complicated when the driveway is thirty feet below the house and the house is built into a hillside. And that is actually what we deal with in like legacy.
And that's why you change it. But I think what can happen is, is because of this ten foot above the lowest grade thing is I think what Mr. Frank was saying is that that ten feet, you can change the height, the, the height allowance by, from forty-five to fifty-five and account for that ten feet. Or you just took ten feet away from builders. That's, I think, what Mr. Frank is saying, is we took ten feet away from builders by changing that grade plane to down there at the daylight basement level.
Well, would it make more sense to make the change with respect to how you calculate grade with a daylight basement?
Yes, but that would not be an amendment that we could do tonight.
I know.
Right. Yeah.
I, I understand.
Well, but that's why it's good discussion because now we can decide if we're going to agree with what DG has put on the table to eliminate this from the, eliminate the River District amendments from this or or not. And so we have a motion now. I think, does anybody else have any more questions?
I just.
Because I think we can vote on this.
Okay, I have one other thought that I might throw out before you vote.
Good.
Because it may be that you want to do a different vote. And the vote may be that you want to, you may want to vote to pull this from the docket and, and. Ooh, I think you can.
Oh, that's what I asked you earlier. I'm sorry. I thought, I didn't know I could do that.
Well, so I, I, I think that, I think that, I think that if there is, that that's possible.
So.
Because this is not, this is not, this is a staff initiated one. If, if it was a privately initiated one, I think you could.
Okay.
So you could potentially do that.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to do what, what Lisa just.
So, so, hold on, we have a motion on the floor first, and that's seconded. And so let's have a, so, so what, what the motion on the floor right now, and which is seconded, is, is to approve this recommendation with modifications that would remove the River District from the changes to the amendments. So I, a roll call vote on that. All in favor, say aye of approving this with the modification of remove the River District. All opposed to approving it with the modification, remove the River District from it, say nay, please.
Nay.
Yeah, so we're going to do a roll call. Nay. Tim, you're not muted, you're muted.
Yay.
Steven Ramirez?
Nay.
DG Garcia?
Yay, I approve the amendment to eliminate the River District development. As the city council, we are advisors. They will make the ultimate decision.
Paul Brown?
Uh, no.
Nay.
Dale Robbins?
Nay.
Nay?
So, so the recommendation does not pass. Uh, do I have another motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to do what Lisa said, to take it back to, uh, for, for her to take it back to a workshop.
An additional staff?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, this one I don't need a roll call on, I don't believe, uh, even though we're at a public hearing.
So, so.
I'll just do it.
Okay, in, in fairness, I see my note taker is looking puzzled. So can, can I suggest that we wordsmith the motion for her for purposes of the minutes?
Well, probably a good idea, but the.
We, we can do that. The motion is to, to take this, uh, these amendments that are at a public hearing and move them back into the planning commission for additional workshop work and staff actions. And pull it out of the public hearing.
I have a roll call vote.
We, we.
Richard Silas?
Yay. I agree to pull it back into the workshop.
Tim Olson?
Yay.
Steven Ramirez?
Yay.
DG Garcia?
Yay.
Paul Brown?
Yay.
Jim Bump?
Yay.
And Dale Robs?
Yay.
May I make a comment? May I make a comment? Um, I, uh, if I ever make a motion, you know I'm going to always approve my own motion, because I think that the motion that one makes is valid. And so in approving it, um, we all get to have a second look at it, because it's going to workshop. Because all of the others who agreed with the motion, now have had an opportunity to say, now we're going to go to another thing. That gives the applicant, the individual, an opportunity to explain it further and come back with more facts that'll help us deliberate over this. Thank you very much.
We still have one more, guys?
Yeah.
So now we're back to, this is the parking amendments. Uh, for, so, so let's go through the process. I don't think we've started this one yet, so we don't have to go backwards on this one. But I'm going to go through, again, I'm going to tell you what we are looking at. We are looking at approving the parking amendments as written uh, for recommendation to the city council. We can also not approve them as written for recommendation city council, or we can approve them with a modification that we make and/or at least summarize here at, at this public hearing. So those are our three choices when we're going through this. So on the conclusion. I'm sorry, is there a motion on this one?
Do you have a motion on this one to, to the River District?
Do, was that a seconded motion?
So technically it's to amend the proposed.
To eliminate Exhibit B.
And, and technically, it's a, we're going to approve it with a modification. Uh, so, okay. A modification that would eliminate the River District's section on these things, the sections, I should say.
It's exhibit, would it be to eliminate Exhibit B?
Exhibit B.
That would be probably the most correct, huh?
Let's do that, okay.
Second.
So, let me go through this. If, if we look at this, I still got to go through our conclusions, guys. So the proposed amendment is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. I guess I'm. Okay, so I'm not, I don't, I'm just going to put it as is unless I have an objection. I don't need votes on that unless somebody objects to me saying it is. The proposed amendment is warranted by a change in economic, technological, and/or land use conditions. I said is. The proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error. The proposed amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. Remember, we got bicycles and electric vehicles in this thing too, so it, it covers a, a gamut of things. The proposed amendment is necessary to provide for a proposed use that was not previously addressed. And then I, I'm going to say the proposed amendment is deemed necessary as being in public interest. Uh, I don't care one way or the other, because we can move forward. If you guys would rather me say is not, just, someone tell me once and I'll go as not. Okay, so we'll go is not unless somebody has an objection to that. So now the recommendation is to approve this with the modification of eliminating Exhibit B. Uh, let's go ahead and that, an aye vote would say you approve it with that modification, eliminate Exhibit B. And a would be you don't approve, uh, with the modification, which mean, and again, that's when we say approve, that's recommending the amendment to the city council.
It's been seconded.
It's already been.
It's already been on there and seconded. So go ahead and roll call. Aye.
Yay.
Steven Ramirez?
Yay.
DG Garcia, yay? Paul Brown?
Yay.
Jim Bump?
Yay. 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 Yay.
So, so the motion passes to go ahead and make the recommendation to the city of our parking ordinance changes for the city of Liberty Lake and not including Exhibit B. So it'll just be including Exhibit A portion of it.
So if we wanted the staff to make modifications and bring it back to us for the River District?
We, we can handle that in a separate meeting or.
Yeah, I think it would be good, once you get Exhibit A completely finished, then let's take a look at that and see how that syncs up with what's happening.
Right now, we don't need to be working on it while we have it going to the city council for their.
I don't want to let Jim get too comfortable.
So, so we do have a couple more things now. That takes care of our public hearing, and our public hearing is closed. Secretaries' reports.
Yes, so very quickly, so, um, we have our newest member, uh, Paul on board. And, uh, we have, uh, people, Big Horse is, uh, being, um, appointed or is going to, on the council agenda for confirmation, um, on the next meeting. So, um, by our next meeting, we should hopefully have a full slate, um, of commissioners.
Welcome, Paul.
That's, that's.
Thank you.
That's all I've got, given the late hour.
But planning commission reports. I, I did, since last week, I did talk to the city council and told them they were going to see five of these coming their way. They still will see five of them coming their way. It just, one will be without, will be, uh, not recommended for approval.
Thank you, Richard.
Citizen comments? Anybody on the phone or on the video? No? Okay, let's adjourn.
Thank you all for your heavy lifting.